I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Private First Class Corey Davis, Private First Class Brett Harper, and Staff Sergeant Brendan Sala.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll stay right there, Councilman Hart will be right down to talk to you.
Am I on? Can you hear me?
It's on.
I had a loud enough to work with it. So I wanted to bring a couple folks out today to do the Pledge of Allegiance with us. As you know, council members during the summer months we get an opportunity to invite some other folks you don't see too often, usually some school kids coming out leading us to the pledge, but today I chose some of my own friends here from the Michigan Army National Guard. As a veteran myself, I guess I get a little choice, so there we are. So I brought on a couple people today. First is one from each classes with Davis there. First is Private First Class Corey Davis, Eleven Bravo Infantry. I get this wrong, just raise your hand. PFC Davis is a Westland resident who joined the Michigan Army National Guard as a senior, attending John Glenn High School in February 2018. He was instrumental in the success of the John Glenn Rockets varsity baseball team as one of their best leaders. He has volunteered to participate in every community event that Sergeant Salo and our Army National Guard has been a part of this year, and graduated from John Glenn in 2018. So, it says here Eleven Bravo, what is that? Infantry, so you're one of the tough, hard-charging guys, so I assume you're going to be going to Fort Benning for basic training, is that right? Going right to airborne school after that? You don't know about that one yet, okay. Well, they're going to change your mind while you're there, I'm sure of you, so. Well, here, I've got something for you right here. I'd like to thank you for showing up and leading us with the pledge. There it is right here. There you are. Can you talk to PFC Hayward real quick? Come on over here. So this is PFC, excuse me, PFC Brett Harper, 12 November, horizontal construction engineer. What's a horizontal construction engineer?
Kind of just a guy that can operate.
Alright, so I assume like you put the bridges out there so that the Eleven Bravo infantry guys can operate, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Especially for the guys like me that were in the rear of the filing with the signal guys showing up to set up our trailers. Okay, okay. Well, PFC Brett Harper is also a Westland resident who joined the Michigan Army National Guard as a senior, attending John Glenn High School in January 2018. He has volunteered to participate in every community event also, and he joined the Michigan Army National Guard as his part this year and has been proudly serving his community every month, every month since he's enlisted. He graduated from John Glenn in June, is that right?
Correct.
Alright, so where are you going to basic training at, do you know?
I'm going to Oklahoma.
Fort Sill, Oklahoma. Nice, be sure to bring back some stories from Fort Sill, Oklahoma for me. Well, here's something for you right here, I appreciate you coming out and working with us and leading us in the pledge. Not a problem, can we talk to Sergeant Salo real quick? So Sergeant Salo, your mothers have you to thank for these young men joining the military, is that correct?
Absolutely, that is absolutely true.
Alright, what can you tell me about these guys we haven't heard already?
Two fine young men, both seniors from John Glenn High School, just recently graduated, probably two of the best soldiers I've had out of here. I mean, so far in the Wayne Westland community, I'm a local, pretty Wayne Westland, probably got about twenty total out of Wayne and John Glenn High School, and these two have been the first ones to step up any time saying, hey, what can we do, how can we help out? And that's exactly what we look for in our Michigan National Guard soldiers, community, state, and country, and these two definitely reflect the exact worthiness of the National Guard.
Outstanding. So I'll tell the two young men I had to join the military right out of high school, it was the smartest thing I ever did. I can thank everything that I've accomplished in my life with that jumpstart I had joining the military. I commend your ability and I commend your commitment to God, country, and honor. You're a credit to yourself, you're a credit to the city of Westland, you're a credit to the Michigan Army National Guard and the United States Army as a whole, right on? Let's give them a round of applause. And they're going to get us to take a picture, and now they turn on my microphone.
Councilwoman Green.
President.
Councilman Hart.
President.
Councilman Hammons.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson is absent, excused. Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Godbout.
Present.
A quorum is present. We'll move on to announcements and presentations. Aaron?
Good evening, council members, and thank you so much for a quick little moment here this morning, here this evening. My name's Aaron Powers, I'm with WCA Assessing, and I'm here on behalf of your city assessor, Jen Neiman. And I'm here this evening just for a quick little moment to provide a little quick public service announcement in regards to our ongoing data verification program we have going out in the city of Westland. And I basically just wanted to give you a quick little explanation of who you might see out in your neighborhoods and what it is that we're doing in regards to our data verification program. But basically, in a nutshell, we're concluding our fifth year of our five-and-a-half-year program of verifying all external information as it relates to the assessor's records. We're going out, we're measuring all primary structures, all garages, all sheds, carports, and issues such as that. The folks that you're going to see out there are going to, of course, have their city of Westland ID. They're also going to have these wonderful and exceptionally fashionable high-vis vests so that they can be seen as they're out, as well as, it's slightly wet because I apologize, it's a little bit wet out there, but our city of Westland contractor cards identifying folks who we are. Additionally, these folks will be seen probably taking some exterior photographs of the residences as they're going through so we can update our records. So if you see someone in one of these wonderful yellow vests and with their contractor information, that's what they are and who they're doing. In addition, they're also going to be receiving a postcard right before we get to the areas that we're going to be measuring and updating in a particular area. The resident should be receiving a postcard a week or two prior to our arrival in that particular area. So just a reminder, kind of bring everybody back up to speed, and I know it's our fifth year of doing this, but sometimes folks forget, and just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed with where we're at and what we're doing, and answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thanks.
Hassan?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to give some updates about a construction project that started today on Ford Road. Actually, the project is to mill and resurface Ford Road from Wayne Road to lots on the city western border line. The project will end approximately on September 17th, and it's run and financed by the Michigan Department of Transportation. What they will do in addition to the main line resurfacing is also some upgrade to the sidewalk, pedestrian crossing, and some signals in accordance with ADA requirements. The project will include some lane closure, but we'll do our best to make sure that we inform our residents about those closures in advance. We already pushed on social media some information regarding the next two-week closure. In a nutshell, closure will be done at night, and mostly will be one lane closed at a time to minimize interruption. We also paid special attention to the Blues Brews and Barbecue events on August 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and we asked for work suspension during those three days. So no work will be done to make sure that people are moving freely from the north to the south side of Ford Road. We will also make sure that you pay attention to the Michigan Department of Transportation website. They push also some information about their project. But if you have any questions, please direct them to us, we'll do our best to answer those questions, and make sure the shopping and dining district remain convenient for public to come and visit.
Thanks, Hassan.
Thank you.
Mary?
Good evening, Councilman Godbout, council, mayor, and all in attendance here. I bring you greetings from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. It's always a pleasure to be in the fine city of Westland. I want to just give you a few updates. I think you all know that there is a contract between Rockbenture and Wayne County relative to a new criminal justice center. That would be the jail, that would be the juvenile detention facility, as well as court building as well, and it's located at Warren and I-75 area. So there will be a new justice center for all there at that location. Many contracts were reviewed, a lot of determinations were made, and there was a vote to approve that contract. Also, in Wayne County, the budgets are being looked at for the 18, 19 year, and Commissioner Anderson is on the Committee of Ways and Means, and he will be providing due diligence to that approval process of the budget. So that's what's going on right now in Wayne County. Also, I want to, I think I've mentioned it here before, but there is a Back to School Fun Fest on August 9th from 10 until 3:00 p.m., and it's sponsored by the Wayne County Health Department, and it's completely free to all. So parents, you want to make sure that you save this date, August 9th, 10 until 3:00 p.m. There'll be hearing and vision testing, dental screening, lead testing, child ID kits, healthy refreshments, free children haircuts, there'll be school immunizations, physicals, you name it, it's going on there, and that's at 33030 Thamborn Road, and that's in the city of Wayne. Also, on August 11th from 8 until 2:00 at Westland Shopping Center, there will be a hazardous household hazardous waste collection at that time, 8:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at Westland Shopping Center. And also, we all know it's a little hot to be drinking coffee, so the coffee hours are not going on at this time, but they will resume in September on September 10th. Thank you. In the meanwhile, if you need to contact us, be sure to do that because we still are working even though there's no coffee hours. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Chief?
Hello. So I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to promote our Westland Police Explorer program. In the Westland Police Department, we have a recruitment team, and it begins all the way with our Explorer program. Our Explorers are young adults ages 15 to 20. From there, we have a police service aide program where we try to bring in 18-year-olds that have interest in law enforcement, the same with our Explorers. We kind of teach them the police work, the job of the Westland Police Officer, and hopefully we kind of build them and recruit them into becoming future Westland Police Officers. What I want to do today is I want to invite, come up here with me real quick, is Officer Matt Allen, Officer Cal Ferny. These guys are Westland Police Explorer advisors, and what they do is they dedicate their time, they volunteer their time to help teach our Westland Police Explorers. And what a lot of people don't realize is our Police Explorers, we see them at all of our city events, they're helping park the cars of direct traffic and show people where to park at the Blues Brews and Barbecue, and the hockey events, and all these other things, but what they don't see is what these guys do here, is they teach them police tactics. We teach them lessons in traffic stops, and accident investigation, and handcuffing, and a bunch of different areas of law enforcement. And what's unique about our team is they're a very young team. A lot of these guys, it's their first year. So every year, up north in northern Michigan, there is a 2000, this year was the 2018 Michigan Law Enforcement Youth Advisory Committee State Competition. And there are teams that come from all over the state of Michigan and Illinois, and they put their teams together. Most of these teams are very experienced and been together for many years, and they compete against each other in tactics of traffic stops and accident reconstruction and different things along that line. And I'm real proud to say that this team, the five that we sent up there, is their very first time ever competing in this competition, and they finished ninth overall and second overall in the accident reconstruction, and it's a very big, very big accomplishment for them. I want to introduce Cole Rice, Haley Dudley, Matthew Allen, Trent Kasich, and Jake Swirple. And I wanted to have the mayor come on down, and he's going to recognize you guys for your fine work.
Well, thank you, chief, and thank you all, thank all of you for representing the city of Westland so proudly at this event. So chief, what we have is on behalf of the city and our city councilor clerk, we have certificates for each one of the participants. So how would you like us to, would you like us to kind of call them up one at a time and recognize? Alright. Our first, our first participant is Matthew Allen. Next up is Haley Dudley. And Jake Swirple. And once again, as the chief had said, our Explorer program is actually, it's quite a tradition here in the city of Westland, and it is really a key part of our recruitment efforts. So it hasn't been that long ago, we just actually swore in a former Explorer to the workforce, so it's doing a great job, and we're very proud of you, and we really appreciate your help that you give us at all the different community events. Thank you.
Okay, and I want to, I want to thank the mayor and the council for their constant support of the Explorer program. I can't say it enough, it's a tough time in law enforcement out there, it's tough to recruit people to do the job of law enforcement, and the fact that these guys dedicate their time and they help develop young adults that want to, you know, start as early as high school, they want to start learning the job, and they develop into police service aides and future police officers. It's the best way for us to start developing young adults and future great police officers, so thank everybody.
Questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council on items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked limited questions, they're input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held July 2, 2018. Minutes of study session held July 2, 2018. Approval of bid for replacement of the roofing system at Fire Station 4 located at 37200 Palmer Road. Administration recommended MWM Roofing Company in the amount of $28,370. Approval of purchase of seven in-car computers and three tablets for the police department. Administration recommended Dell computers for this purchase in the amount of $25,979.63. Approval of purchase of five SIU vehicles for the police department. Administration recommended the purchase from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC in the amount of $163,639. Approval of outfitting of three police patrol vehicles. Administration recommended utilizing the pricing previously provided by ABS Storage in the amount of $13,617. Approval of agreement between the city of Westland and Axon Enterprises Incorporated regarding police vehicle camera equipment. The one-year payment is not to exceed $30,888, and the total cost, which will be paid over a five-year span, equals $154,440. The last item on the consent calendar is approval of the First Contact Initiative Grant Agreement between the city of Westland and Wayne County to provide prevention, intervention, and diversion services through the Department of Youth Assistance. The term of this agreement shall be for a three-year period with the option of two one-year extensions, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Moving to unfinished business. Item one. Approval of developer agreement to administer the city redevelopment program to redevelop and sell tax-foreclosed properties to homebuyers. Administration recommends realty transition and national faith homebuyers to manage the program, and the mayor and city clerk to sign the developer agreement, and community development director to sign all other related documents. This item had been postponed on July 2, 2018.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support? Support by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item two. Approval of acquisition of several properties from Wayne County for the unpaid taxes to demolish or redevelop the properties using community development block grant, home program, and general funds, and to sell the properties through the community development and economic development departments and/or the city redevelopment tax foreclosure developer program. Wow. If approved, the director of housing and community development is authorized to sign the purchase agreement and the closing documents for these properties on behalf of the city.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hammons, is there support? Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item three. Approval of revised site plan for proposed exterior remodel for McDonald's restaurant located at 33921 Ford Road, south side of Ford, east of Wildwood, planning department number 1170A revised. Planning commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilman Hart, is there support? Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item three. Approval of revised site plan for proposed exterior remodel for McDonald's restaurant located at 33921 Ford Road, south side of Ford, east of Wildwood, planning department number 1170A revised. Planning commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and if approved, directs a city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. This is, there's actually two properties that are involved in the request this evening. The one is directly in the center of this picture, it's a vacant piece of property that's actually owned by the home that you see to the right, which is to the south, and then the petitioner's property, which is to the north. This is an area that's completely residential in nature, homes on John Hicks, both north and south, homes in the subdivision to the east, and then homes on the west side of John Hicks. And in essence, what we have here is a simple land swap, property to the south giving the property to the north, selling the property to the north, I should say, 10 feet. And so what you're looking at is just a simple land division with a combination. Both lots will exceed minimum lot width and lot area standards, therefore approval is recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the petitioner present?
Do you have anything else you'd like to add? No, I don't.
Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Councilman Londo?
Just more of a comment, just want to thank Bruce Thompson for reaching, or speaking with me. I had someone reach out to me on Watson Circle, didn't express any concern at all, but I appreciate Bruce explaining everything to me, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
New business. Item five. Confirmation of appointment of Gary Thomas to the
is what that exterior will look like. So, it's a combination of metal and EPIS exterior materials. So, basically, what you saw was before and after. All affected departments have reviewed the proposal. All comments have been addressed on the revised site plan. Therefore, approval is recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. See petitioner here?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Greg Lotzenheiser with LNA Architects. We're the architects for the project. Mr. Thompson gave a very good introduction of our project. This is a reimage program that McDonald's is doing nationwide over the next couple of years, and we are just reimagining their buildings to the new image inside and out. And part of what we're doing as well, any ADA deficiencies in both the site and building, we're addressing at this time as well. And I'm really here to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck and thanks.
Thank you very much.
New business. Item four. Approval of proposed land division in combination. Parcels number 079990010000 and 0011000. East side of John Hicks Road, north of Glenwood Road, Planning Department number 2214. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and if approved directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Landau, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. This is, there's actually two properties that are involved in the request this evening. The one is directly in the center of this picture. It's a vacant piece of property. It's actually owned by the home that you see to the right, which is to the south, and then the petitioner's property, which is to the north. This is an area that's completely residential in nature. Homes on John Hicks, both north and south, homes in the subdivision to the east, and then homes on the west side of John Hicks. And in essence, what we have here is a simple land swap. Property to the south giving the property to the north, selling the property to the north, I should say, 10 feet. And so, what you're looking at is just a simple land division with a combination. Both lots will exceed minimum lot width and lot area standards. Therefore, approval is recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the petitioner present? Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Councilman Landau?
Just more of a comment. Just want to thank Bruce Thompson for reaching, or speaking with me. I had someone reach out to me on Watson Circle. Didn't express any concern at all, but I appreciate Bruce explaining everything to me. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
New business. Item five. Confirmation of appointment of Gary Thomas to the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority for a four-year term with the term to expire July 16, 2022.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Landau. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Gary, if you'd like to stand and be recognized.
New business. Item six. Approval of voucher.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support? Support by Councilman Landau. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Blake?
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and other staff. It really hit me as I was speaking at a community event. We had a really big issue in the disability community, namely our group homes. I overcome my story a lot of how I've overcome and learned how to control my anger management problem to where it's put me at a really good spot as an advocate in life. And I really think that we need to put more of a focus on group homes. If I may use the chief for example, and I'll thank you for this now. It was a point to where my roommate got mad at me because the staff gave me a pop. So, it got out of control. So, the police came and left and came. And I know that's a really big problem in a lot of our communities, and that's why I was more engaged to reach out to the chief and the fire chief, which I did not get a response, but he was probably busy. And I just thought it would be really nice to engage community dances for people that face group home issues, because we talk a lot about disability and we talk about the institutionalized and we talk about that. But at an aspect of everything that happens with mental health, ADA policy through the authority, it actually is with our community, with our group homes. What you may not know is that a lot of these people that are in these group homes have public guardians, and they are forced to be with living there. And one of the things that got me out of my situation was I learned how to control my emotions to be a better person, and it gave me guardianship. But one of the most things, I know that there are a lot of phone calls directed to the police, directed to the chief on a Saturday or Sunday, and I just wanted to do better for, you know, the views that have made me a better person. Remember, a long time ago, it was funny, the first state representative ever met was this guy, and I just had this crazy idea, hey, let's put a camera in every group home. He's like, how are you going to afford that? And it was just, it was just that go at it. And that spirit, that spirit made me change, you know, got me outside the white house. And I just think that it's truly time to give back to our community, because I think everything that we talk about and represent, we're not representing it in our communities within these group homes. And I think that it should be initiative. So, I asked Joanne Campbell, would it be possible if the gymnasium could be sponsored? So, I would ask, if it was professionally, is it possible, Mr. Mayor, that the city can sponsor if the gym can be used quarterly for these community dances? Or, I mean, should I just email Joanne and do it that way?
Good evening, Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I would encourage you to work with Ms. Campbell. I know she was here earlier tonight, but absolutely, we're, we'd be something we could certainly take a look at.
Okay, thank you, sir. And thank you, City Council.
Anyone on my left? Yes?
Tim Gilbert, business owner here in Westland, also a resident. I just wanted to take this opportunity and commend Mr. Landau on reaching out to one of the residents here in the City of Westland. Sometimes we don't get the answers we want. We don't the, the, you know, the encouragement and the nice response from some of the residents. And I applaud you for reaching out to that Westland resident, helping them out. But I wanted to go one step further and ask, and I'm sure you probably already know the answer to this question. As far as the retaining wall between the strip mall and the residential area, I understand it's not required, as you explained to the resident. Is it a possibility to bring that to an agenda where the city may consider putting up that wall and paying for that wall? I look forward to your answer. Thank you.
Blake?
If I could just start. I appreciate the kind words, and the property he's referring to is the strip mall at Wayne, Wayne Road in Glenwood. It's been an ongoing issue. I've been working with hands-on, working with our neighborhood specialists, and as you said, working with the residents over there. If I could, through the chair, to the city attorney, if the city attorney can just bring up or explain the due process of when ordinance completely comes in and explain that for us, and then I'll continue with my comments. Please.
Thank you. Yes, oftentimes, folks think the city can act unilaterally or immediately on issues that they feel are blight, whether it be a wall or a fence that's falling down or trash that accumulates along there. The city has due process requirements that it has to follow so that no citizens' rights are trampled by unilateral activity. So, there are notices, tickets which are issued, court opportunities for the resident to come in and explain the situation, why it shouldn't qualify as a violation of the ordinances. That process takes more time than most people think it should, but it's done specifically to make sure that the rights of the other party are also acknowledged and worked within.
I believe you pretty much answered the wall question. Back to that question. When that building was built back in the 90s, building code at the time was you had to have a wall at the residential fence line, I believe, or the property line. And because I think that's Christine Street, it's not on the property line, so building code didn't require that. Not sure if that's something we could force, but yeah, I don't really know the answer to that question, to be honest. Sorry.
Jerry, anyone on my right? Right?
Hello, my name is Bray. It's nice to be here tonight. And the police officers from Westland was at our Disability Concern Group. And what I want to talk about is a little bit about the event for special, special need people. And we're working on that event, and I hope it becomes a successful thing for the Westland Police Department as a leadership. Anyway, so that meeting, I thought it went really well. And Cope in Livonia, I'm very disappointed with the mental health. It's not the mental health thing, but it brings out the, I don't want to make it look bad, because it's not. It's good, because we're trying to help people. It was, the thing on the news was very disturbing to me, and it's not cool. And there was another hospital today. You know, people go out there and reach out for help, you know, and one day you all, even me or anybody, can affect us. It's mental health. And when you want to go somewhere, you should be able to be looked at as a person. So, and when you're doing services, sometimes people need help to reach out to somebody. I wouldn't want to go somewhere like that after you find out somebody who's been abused. That's terrible. My heart goes out to them people. That's why I'm so passionate at what I do here in Westland. I've reached out to Livonia already, City Council, given on my membership book. I'm going to be traveling. I'm going to go to Dearborn Heights next and talk about the good things here in Westland, how the leadership is here. I want to see that mental health, and I'm going to put it in a positive way. Positive way is we are all people. We all need help, and we all need a helping hand in something, and passion, and the compassion. And I want to say, I think the Westland Police Department is doing a good job with this explore with people. That's awesome. I saw that tonight and them getting awards for that. I do really support that. The Fire Department, sometimes we don't give these people enough support and say how, what good jobs they are doing, because you turn the news on every day, there's an officer who's putting their lives out for you. We ought to thank our officers and say, thank you, police, for doing a good job. I just want to say thank you.
Anyone on my left?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to say that on Friday about 1:00, Mr. Everett and I will be celebrating our 65th wedding anniversary. We have spent over 63 of those years in the City of Westland, and it was not our, it was our only home. It was our homestead, and we hope to pass it on to my children. But in the meantime, it has been a good place to live. We have been good citizens. And above all, I'd like to say to Mr. Everett, I never would have made it without you.
Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Everett. Miss Everett's the mayor of the southeast, southeast Westland, so that makes Mr. Everett the first husband? All right. Congratulations once again. Council, just a couple of things. First of all, thank you for your confirmation of the appointment of Gary Thomas to the Economic Development Corporation, the TIFRA Board. Gary's still with us tonight. Since Gary's came on to his role at the Westland Shopping Center, he's been, he's just been an incredible partner in a lot of different ways. So, we really appreciate his partnership and his leadership, and he's one phone call away, no matter what it is. And we really appreciate his willingness to serve on our TIFRA Board as we start to kind of reimagine this entire area moving forward. And the Westland Shopping Center is going to play a big part of that. So, you've been attending the meetings already, so thank you for attending, and I'll thank you officially for your appointment. Thank you, Council. You know, Council, actually, all I have tonight, just a couple upcoming things, and that's going to make a, just a kind of a reflection on some things I saw around town this weekend. But this Saturday is going to be the second annual pet vaccination day at the Wayne Ford Civic League. And anybody that participated last year, it was absolutely amazing how many people showed up and how many people brought their dogs. And then after I found out how expensive, because we have a dog too, once I found out how expensive those vaccinations were, that they can have them vaccinated for only $10 apiece. That certainly was a big hit. So, it's this Saturday. It has been asked before, does this also for cats? Unfortunately, with the grant that we got on this one through some private funding, it is only for dogs. First Day Dog Rescue was the big push behind this. But the event is this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's limited to the first 250 attendees, so you'll certainly want to get there early. Westland veterans can also have their dogs vaccinated free at this event. So, certainly, we encourage everybody to come out. And once again, thank you Last Day Dog Rescue for their partnership on this. And we're also going to have dogs available that day from Last Day Dog Rescue for veterans. And they'll be able to adopt dogs that day for only $25. So, it's a much anticipated event. I've already been receiving phone calls about it, so once again, it's this Saturday. Another popular event is going to be Friday, July 27, and that'll be Free Shredding Day at the Senior Center, and that's certainly something that is very utilized as well. The event, it'll happen right in the parking lot at the Westland Friendship Center on Friday, July 27. The event runs from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and residents can bring old documents and have them disposed of in a secure manner. So, residents can bring up to 100 pounds of paper to be shredded. So, we encourage our seniors, especially in the day and age where there's such a threat with identity theft, that we encourage them to bring their documents to the Friendship Center. We'll make sure that they're properly shredded. And then, Council, we're right around the corner from Westland's most anticipated annual event, Blues Brews and Barbecue. It'll be here in just a few short weeks. It's the first weekend in August, Friday, August 3, and Saturday, August 4. We'll be back at Thomas H. Brown Central City Park. The event kicks off Friday night, and we've got a full lineup of great bands on Friday night. We'll be back on Saturday. The event starts on Saturday at 4:00, and it'll go right up until 10:00. And at the end of, at the end of the event, at 10:00 will be the Westland's annual fireworks festival, fireworks display. So, it should be a good time. There'll be, actually, we have more barbecue this year than we've ever had before. And I know they've even gone so far as to get more Michigan Craft beers there this year, too. So, it's going to be a great event, and the fireworks, if you saw those last couple of years, they'll be just as good as the last couple of years, if not better. And then, Mary had mentioned earlier that Saturday, August 11, at Westland Shopping Center will be the annual Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. So, you can get more information on that on the city's Facebook, on the city's website. We have a whole list of things that you can get rid of that day. And there are a lot of things that we can get rid of that day that we can't take curbside, and our drop-off site doesn't take them as well. So, this is a good day to get rid of that stuff and keep it out of the landfill. And then, the last thing, Council, is just, this past weekend and over the last couple of years, we've really been doing a lot of investments around town, investing in our parks and in the farmer's market area and several areas around town. And this past weekend, there were just so many really neat events happening around town. It was hard to believe how many people were in attendance at the, this was the first time Westland held the National Unicycle Championship, which, when we first heard it too, we thought the same thing. But I got to tell you, it was really, really cool. And it was amazing how many people came from all across the country to this unicycle championship, which was held at the Concrete Jungle. And it was the last stop on a, on a tour. And the winners of this competition will be competing in South, I believe it was South Korea in a couple of weeks. So, it was a really big thing, and a lot of people came from all across the country. At the same time, when you looked at the farmer's market, there was an incredible event going there, and it was just being utilized, and everybody was having a good time. There was a huge, huge family reunion going on in Tatten Park and over in Voss Park, where we've just made a big investment in the baseball fields and creating a place for the Meteors to play. There was just a huge event happening there, too, and everybody was having a good time. And I know that at Ashley's, they had, they hosted the North American Belgian Beer Festival, and I had a chance to go by there. And it was just amazing how many people were there that don't live in the City of Westland that came in from all across the area. And there was one point where the Belgian beer masters were actually teaching beer makers, you know, local beer makers, how to make beer. And it was like a classroom, and it was just amazing how many people were, were hanging on every word of the Belgian beer masters. It was really, it was really neat. So, this past weekend, there was a lot of people in town from out of, out of state and from out of town. So, I think Westland put their best face forward, and we welcomed a lot of people. And a lot of the new investments were certainly, certainly getting utilized. Was great to see. That's all we have tonight. Thank you.
Anything from the city attorney's office?
Thank you, Council President. Just to let Council know, a couple of council members have asked when certain items might be coming forward. You'll be seeing soon the lighting SAD discussion. We're waiting for some numbers from DTE, which we believe we'll have this week, which will allow us to put those resolutions and documents forward to you. Additionally, we expect to bring forward proposed ordinances on the unsolicited newspaper issue that has been raised. We took a look at the Lansing. There's a recent Sixth Circuit case. It's allowed us to feel more comfortable that we have a solid constitutional plan there. Also, an ordinance on storage pods on residential properties and tweaking the garage sale ordinance, which was also part of the discussions in the late spring with the Council. So, we're moving forward on those. There's many others on that list that need to be worked, but you can expect to see those sort of four items in the near term. Thank you.
Thanks. Again, Council comments with Councilman Landau.
Thank you, President Gabo. I wasn't ready. I want to start off by thanking Mr. Gary Thomas for Want to start off by thanking Mr. Gary Thomas for serving on the Economic Development Board, the TIFIL board. Westland Shopping Center's an anchor in our community and our Shop &amp; Dine District, and it's important to have partnerships. And I appreciate you serving on that board and look forward to working with you. And also want to talk about some of the items that were on our agenda tonight, the public safety investments and our last agenda as well. It's important to keep our residents safe. Something, a commitment I made to the residents before I ran for council was, one of my priorities was to ensure both our police and fire departments had the resources to keep us safe. In my opinion, these investments really strengthen our public safety, our already great Westland Police Department and Fire Department, and assist them in their efforts to keeping our residents, our local business, and our officers and firefighters safe. Also like to welcome the two new neighborhood specialists to our Neighborhood Services Division, Mr. Aubrey and Mr. Nybert. It's going to be great to have additional resources in the neighborhood, focusing on resident education, customer service, and ensuring every neighborhood is clean, safe, and enjoyable for everyone. Bulk pickup started on July 1. I've had some questions regarding that with Holiday Park, how do they, or other condominiums that participate in Westland's sanitation program? How does that process work if you live in the condominiums? It's the same process as the residents that live in homes. You call the city or call DPS, go on the city's website, there's a banner on the right-hand side for special pickup, and you put it out on your regularly scheduled trash day. You have to contact the city two days in advance. The only caveat to that is you put your items out by your bin rather than out by the curb, wherever you put your trash typically. WIA signups are coming up. We have the cheerleaders and football season coming up real soon for the Westland Meteors and the Westland Comets. If you know anybody that's looking to join in cheerleading, it's $175. For football, it's $250. And you can get more information by going to the WIAA.com. We brought up the ordinance issue that Mr. Gilbert brought up. Our next, Meet the Council, or Meet with Your City Council, will be on Saturday, August 11, at Carrato Park at noon. It'll be on the north end of our city. We're moving this one outside to take advantage of the warm weather in one of our beautiful parks. So I'd like to invite the residents that live in the area or anybody around the city to come visit with your city council, discuss issues of importance to you, and I look forward to seeing you. Thanks.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to start by thanking the young men who came in tonight and led the pledge, and also thanking them for their contribution to our U.S. military. I'd also like to congratulate the Westland Police Department and the students in the Explore Program. The contribution that you make here in our community is, it's without words, so thank you. Also, I'd like to, speaking of law enforcement, just inform everyone that I, the Wayne County Sheriff's Department is actually hiring, and they are doing a one-stop hiring event for anyone who is looking to become a full-fledged sheriff deputy. I was recently sworn in as a reserve sheriff deputy. But if you are looking to become a full-fledged sheriff deputy, the Wayne County Sheriff's Department is hiring, and that is for all of the county, the cities that make up our county. So that's Westland, Livonia, Garden City, Inkster, Detroit, and several other cities. So they are doing a one-stop hiring event on next Saturday, July 28, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30. That's going to be at Wayne State University Multi-Purpose Indoor Facility. That's located at 5327 South John C. Lodge Service Drive in Detroit. If you have any questions regarding that, or if I went over that information too quickly, you can contact the recruiter, who is Chuck Pappas, and his telephone number, office is 313-224-0641. Again, 313-224-0641. And some of the requirements that they're looking for is not too stringent. You have to be at least 18 years of age, valid driver's license, possess a high school diploma or a GED, no felony convictions, be a U.S. citizen, qualified to get a concealed pistols license, and a few other things. So again, if you are looking to contribute to our county as a sheriff deputy, that's something that you can consider in the near future. I'd also like to thank Mr. Gary Thomas for your reinstatement on the TIFIL commission. Thank you for your contribution, and we look forward to another four great years with you. And finally, I would like to just thank or congratulate Mrs. Everett and Mr. Everett on 65 years of marriage, and may you have 65 more. Thank you.
Councilman Hammons.
Thank you, Council President. I too want to congratulate our Westland Explorers and thank you for representing Westland, the city of Westland, the way that you've done. And Chief, thanks for having them out here tonight. They did an awes, they're doing an awesome job, and thank you. I too want to also congratulate Gary Thomas on your appointment. Look forward to serving or working with you. If there's anything you ever need from us, please let us know. And that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Hart.
Thank you. I'll be next in line. 65 years, happy anniversary. They say behind every strong man is a stronger woman, and behind every strong woman is a smart man who knows when to be quiet and do what the boss tells you. Congratulations on your 65 years. God bless. Gary Thomas, thanks. Looking forward to working with you another four years. And last thing to the Explorers, they do do a fantastic job. When I was a young man, my wife and I, many, many moons ago, we were just dating in high school, we were a part of the Explorers as well. And Chief, I got to tell you, I thought we did a lot of work then. These Westland Explorers, I see, they really put in the, put in the midnight oil. They work really hard. They do 10 times whatever we did when I was an Explorer a few moons ago. So you have some outstanding kids there, so great job. With that, it rained earlier, so hopefully everybody's lawn starts to turn a little green again, and enjoy your day.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. I'll also just take a second to commend the Westland Police Department on both the Explorer Program and the Youth Police Academy that's going on. It's a lot of good things coming from the PD, so thanks for that. Thanks to Hassan for the update on Ford Road. That's something I think all of the council members have been getting questions on for the last few weeks. So just to reiterate, it's from Wayne Road to Lots on Ford Road, night construction, and they're going to be finished on September 17. Congratulations, Gary Thomas, on your reappointment. And then a couple of the council members will be having our coffee hour again, August 11. This time, we're going to go to Carrato Park, and that'll be at noon on August 11. I think we'll meet at the gazebo over there. So anybody's welcome to join us. Also, that day's a pre-concert at the Westland Mall at 4:00. And also at the Westland Mall, but on the Central City side, is Hazardous Waste Disposal Day, where you can get rid of old paints, oils, and cleaning supplies. It's a good way to get rid of that and keep it out of the landfill. That goes from 8:00 to 2:00 p.m. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to start by thanking Private First Class Corey Davis, Private First Class Brett Harper, and Staff Sergeant Brendan Saleh on leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. I too'd like to commend the, our Police Department and the Explorer Program for their success at the recent competition. And as you saw, there's some, some great individuals, some fine young potential police officers here within the city. I too'd like to thank Gary for serving on the TIFIL board. Gary's been very active since he's come in as the management at the mall. You see him at all the chamber events. He's taken an active role in the TIFIL board, and it's, it's great to have you onboard. Thanks again. And I too'd like to thank the, and congratulate the Everets. 65 years, that's, that's three life sentences. Congratulations. I look like a piker coming up on 40 compared to you two, so. And with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.